I've been here this morning, if you would, please rise to your feet for our indication, then you'll ask Mr. Westbrook to lead us in our plea. Kind heavenly Father, we thank you today for all the many blessings that's been ours to enjoy, and we realize our unworthiness and unrighteousness before Thee, but we are thankful that Thy mercy has been bestowed upon us in a special way, and we pause in our busy lives this day to give you thanks and adoration for such a blessing. We ask, Father, today, that you would bless all our many and varied communities, bless those who have been storm-radged, those who stand in need, we know there are many, and we trust in a special way that you would overshadow them with the umbrella of Thy providence and extend Thy mercy in a special way this day to all who have been affected. We thank you for the blessing of being spared from the devastation that many have suffered, and we just ask to continue, Father, with us and help us to look unto Thee, who is the Author and Finisher of our faith. Bless us all this day, bless the decisions that we make, help us that we can serve You better by serving one another, lead us by the understanding of the Spirit, and again, accept our thanks, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Mr. Westbrook?
I'm going to pledge, face flag, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, big speak, wait. Again, we thank you for being present with us this morning, and we will expedite our agenda as quick as possible. First item is to approve our minutes, as you perceive them, if any changes needs to be made, if not, I'll solicit a motion that we accept them as they have been or perceived by you.
So moved.
Your second. Motion second in the discussion, in many's favor, let me know saying aye. Anyone post a objection? Thank you, motion carries, let's record some state. Road Department Engineering Maintenance Update, Mr. Broyles.
Good morning. I've been breathing this morning, but don't have a lot to update you on. I would like to say that I'm pleased we did come through the storm with very little damage. We found a few trees down and some big limbs and things out laying in the road and on the sides of the road that we're removing today, but we were very fortunate that we didn't receive quite a bit more damage than that. I think the rain probably failed at a rate that it didn't cause any flooding problems either, which is also good, so I'm pleased to be able to tell you that we don't seem to have sustained anything damaging much from the storm. I think the last time I was here, we talked about the Buck's Pocket project we were working on, and we actually got to reopen that road last week. We still have just a little bit more work down there to do, we have some approach work to do on the county side of this crossing. We're gonna take up some old asphalt and put some new down, part of the asphalt's been washed away over the years. And at the parking lot at the office down in the pocket, we have a little bit of asphalt work to do there, and on the road going to the overlook, we're gonna do a little bit of work on it, but hopefully sometime in the next two or three weeks, weather permitting, we'll be able to get that finished up. But we do have a crossing part finished up, and we did turn it, open it back to traffic last week, so I'm glad to have that project behind us. That's about all I have, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
Thank you, Mr. Broyles, and questions, Mr. Broyles.
Well, we've been fortunate, I think we dodged a bullet here on this, with the storm. I know if we would have had a lot of flooding and issues that might have been expected, it would have really put us even further behind than what we are in my district especially, but we've, because of this unusual year with the weather and a lot of rain that we've gotten recently, we've run into a situation in my district where we don't have access to our chert pit because of, our chert pit is the type that, that once it gets wet, it takes a long time to dry out. Next year, as you and I have discussed, next year, we have several roads in my district that are currently tar and gravel roads that have deteriorated to the point that we're gonna have to reclaim them. We do not have the funds to retar and gravel those roads, so we're just gonna have to put chert back on. That chert pit, with its history of getting wet and taking a long time to dry out, is there, do you know of any other chert pit in the Valleyhead area or in that area that we might procure some chert for and then prepare for next year?
Only thing I know about would be the same type material as that is, we're just, I don't know of anything up there that would be any better than what we're getting. All that material has a high percentage of clay in it, and that's why it gets so sticky and so slick when it rains on it, and that's why it takes us long to dry out. Material like we have in the Collinsville pit does not have that much clay, it's a little more rock in it, and it's a lot more forgiving in this kind of weather than that is, so I really don't have a good answer to that, you know, we had explored the possibility of trying to get back in this old Evans pit, it's marco, but after Ben and I looked at it, and we walked that property, and I don't think there's anything left enough to justify trying to get back into it, and really don't think it's near as good material whilst left in this summer, what has been excavated from it, but I don't know of anything. We've hauled material out of a few of those pits up there, and it really don't seem to be any different really overall than what we get this upper springs.
I got a call from someone the other day and said, you know, it looks like, it looks like we watched the forecast, and every time it's fixing to rain, we come work on their road, but it does rain around here, and we don't have any control of that, but I think we, we need to start looking through that, through this winter to see what we, and thinking about what we were gonna be able to do next year, as far as, you know, we've got several dirt roads that need some, some base on, and then those, those roads that we're gonna have to take back to dirt roads, we're gonna have to try to figure out something that we're gonna be able to do for those, but they have to have something.
Those roads that are in need of being reclaimed, they already have a chert base under them, we may just have to reclaim them and just let that be our base until we can do something more substantial, it would be as good as anything you could haul. Part of it may be better, because part of it probably was hauled out of this blubber pit when we were still taking material from there, so we may want to look at that, we may want to look at putting some, some chips or something and reclaiming that and incorporating it in with whilst already there or something, when we reclaim it, but it's, it's all got a chert base under it already, and like I said, it's, I don't know of anything up there that would be any better than what's already there. There's no easy answer to your question, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, for the public to know, I've got, I've got, in the last couple of weeks, I've got more phone calls than I've probably got in the whole previous year combined. A lot of them were dirt roads, and the public district needs to understand, it's gonna be a while, it's gonna be according to the weather, what we're able to do. The weather has got us behind this year, and then the, the road maintenance issues that we have anyway, we don't have the manpower to be able to keep up with them, because of the lack of funding to be able to resurface roads in the past has really caught up with us, and I also got a lot of calls about patching their, their roads in the last couple of weeks, and I'm gonna read a quick list, and y'all are gonna think I'm telling you this story, but I called my crew leader today, and I said, "Give me the list of patched roads that we're, that we're up to right now, and what we, we've been doing since the first of the spring is just starting, starting with that list, and every time one comes in, we put one at the bottom of the list, if we get one that's just really, really bad shape, we may have to move it up," but most of them stay in that, that order. The last road we finished was 608, it took four weeks, sixteen days to patch that road to get it back in shape, so these are not patched jobs that just take a day or a day and a half to run, do, these roads have gotten in that bad a shape. We've been on, working on 712 for the past month or so, every opportunity that the patch truck has been available for, for our use, so 712, 803, 727, 228, 764, 611, 754, 775, 721, 719, 371, 815, 783, 219, 222, and 664 is the, is the patch truck list right now, that's sixteen roads. So if your road's not on that list, if, if, you're probably not gonna get it patched this year, if your road is on that list, you may not get it patched this year. So there's, our hands are tied, we've only got so much, so many employees and so much ability, unfortunately, it's, it's, it's something that the state legislator has led us down year after year, when we've been begging for more money and begging for more money, we've been telling them, this is coming, and that's here, and, and people are really starting to have problems with their roads, and it's, it's getting, it's gonna get worse and worse.
Well, anytime you have to reclaim a paved road, it tells you that there's a problem somewhere.
And I also want to say, I'm on my little soapbox today, you know, the county commissioner's the one that, that they can get a hold of, and they don't realize that the state has took that ability away from us, they've continued to take ability away from us to make decisions, so it's, each state legislator is the one that needs to be getting the calls. Our hands are tied, we've, we've tried and tried, so when it doesn't do any good, call them, chew us out, because we don't have the ability to do anything about it. That seems sounds, people don't understand why that's that way, but it is that way unfortunately, so, you know, these guys up here are running the same situation that, that I do, and Mr. Harrow takes calls all the time, bless his heart, I don't know how he, how he does it.
I'm just tired of it.
And, and we get chewed out time and time again about things that's, that's not under our control, and it's time for us to say, "Who's in control?" And that's the state legislator, and so state legislators once needs to be here in front of people.
We're operating today on funds that were, you know, the last tax increase we had, I think it was nine and two.
That's right.
Just look at the increases in material costs, fuel, gas, equipment, trucks, salaries, things like that, that taken toll on it, and really, if they get to looking real deep, it'd be amazing that we do what we can with what we've got to do with, but it's a, it's a struggle, and there's no easy answers to the thing, to the list of roads that you've got, you know, there's not an easy answer to that, we ain't getting that kind of shape overnight, we won't get out like that overnight either, so.
That's right.
Mr. Broyles, I'm, I'm not gonna attempt to read my list.
Do when they give a cherry.
Contrary to Mr. Harrow's claim to expedite this meeting, but I do have a question, what's, where are we at with the equipment purchase for the, the tar and gravel patching that we were?
We have the equipment purchased, we have the distributor and the two spreaders that, we have those purchased.
Do you have, do you have an estimated timeframe where that might be functional for us to utilize?
Well, not a real good one, but, you know, again, depending on whether we might be able to do some work this year, probably be, I'd say in the month of October, probably we might, it won't take just a little while to mount the spreaders on the trucks, and then a little bit more time to actually put the parts on the distributor that, that it needs, but then you got to, you know, get material stockpiled, you gotta decide where you're gonna go with it, and, and then you got to come up with the manpower and time to do it, you know, hopefully we will get to do some work sometime this year, maybe in October, and again, it depends on what the weather does, and how far behind we are with, with other things.
Just curious, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westbrook.
One quick question, how do we stand on the, the final round of mowing?
All crews are currently mowing, I don't, they turn their roads into me each week, and they seem to be making pretty fair progress with it, and of course, days like this are unheard of, some it's kind of dangerous to be mowing on a day like today or yesterday, but I think you're all making good progress on it. We're not making that good progress with the second round on our herbicide application, it's a lot more sensitive to the weather than even the mowing is.
One more quick statement, Mr. Harrow, and I'm sorry, I'll, I'll be finished, but I wanted to clear up, I did say the state legislator is the one responsible for this, and they're the ones you need to contact, I do want to make it clear that Representative Ledbetter and Senator Livingston has been working with us to try to get funding, but it still wouldn't hurt if they heard from you, so they can tell you what senators and what representatives have not been working with us, in that way that you know, the young public will know who to talk to. I'm done.
My wording of expeditious, doing this agenda is simply one of repetition. I do that every time, so, excuse me, counselor, go ahead.
Mr. Broyles, you're aware that the Evans pit was examined by our engineer, and formal notice, there was a discussion, by letter, for permission to do, to examine that pit, to try to find more local chert, and they have, the families have been formally noticed that quality justice isn't there, as you said, but I said that really for the minute as much as anything, but that's been months ago now that we set the final level to them.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Mr. Broyles.
Thank you.
Engineer, Mr. Luther.
Good morning. We are scheduled to hold two public, or hold a public hearing for two proposed road vacations. First one will be on County Road Nine, this is in District Two, it's just a short portion of a Y intersection, property owner has asked to close off that particular section to make it more usable for the remainder of the property, so I would ask that the floor be open for anyone to speak on this at this time.
Is one here in regard to the closure and the change of County Road Nine? They are none, Mr. Broyles.
Then I would ask the commission to pass a resolution authorizing this vacation.
Okay, Mr. Westbrook, I believe this is your air.
That's, I'm, I'm familiar with the, the section road that you're talking about, so as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I'm good with that, if there's no opposition out in the county, so I would recommend to make a motion that, that we form a resolution stating such.
Thank you, Mr. Westbrook, do your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion, in many's favor, let me know saying aye. Thank you, let's record some statements, now, County Road Eight Sixty Two.
Yes, this is County Road Eight Sixty Two, Sixty Three, it is a Danian road, top lookout mountain above Collinsville, all of the adjoining property owners have, have signed petition to request this vacation, and again, would ask anyone here to speak on that as well.
Is there anyone here in regard to Eight Sixty Two? If not, Mr. Kite, I believe this is your air.
It's best interest of property owners, county as well, to close this particular roadside meant that we take.
Thank you, Mr. Kite, all of you here second. Thank you, motion second in discussion, in many's favor, let me know saying aye. Anyone post a objection, let's record some statements, and now, road exceptions, Mr. Luther.
Andy Endeavor Shankles developed a small subdivision over the last two years in the Rainsville area off of County Road Five Oh Five, it's in District Four, laid out, done all of the requirements that were asked of them through the regulations, building the road, the road was built under, under my supervision and paved as such, they were responsible for it for a year, they requested we accept it, there were a few minor things that needed to be corrected, and they took care of that, and so I would ask today that the commission formally accept this short Danian road in the Storybrooke subdivision into our maintenance program.
Thank you, Mr. Luther, Mr. Jackson, I believe this is your air.
Yeah, I think Shankles always does a good job of coming up specs and working with engineer, and with your recommendation, I'm making a motion to him, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, do your second, Mr. Jackson, please, motion second, Mr. Kite, any discussion, in many's favor, let me know saying aye. Anyone post a objection, let's record some statements, and now, road reclamation, Mr. Luther.
Last week, the Jackson County engineer had contacted me, they were asking if we would be willing to assist them in a road reclamation project, Tommy and I had met with Mr. Campbell, his supervisor, last week, rode the road, took a look at it, and Mr. Campbell had kind of come up with a force account method, of course, we do standard force account work, what we do in-house, like our Adeka road reclamation, where we have a standard rate for the use of the equipment, have standard labor rates that we charge back as in-kind work, we would use this same method for this proposed work, they had asked that we provide the reclamer and an operator, the project's about two miles long, probably a three to four day project, based on the, the equipment rate that we use, our fringe benefit labor rate, plus twenty percent on that, anywhere within the, the window of fifty-three hundred to seventy-one hundred dollars, give or take a little here or there, just again, depending on the total amount of time that it would take. Mr. Campbell, I give him these, these numbers, he was going to go to his chairman to discuss it, to make sure that they would be okay with those numbers, so I would ask today if, if the commission would be willing to authorize the road department to perform, to enter into a, an agreement with, with Jackson County to perform this work for them at the specified and agreed upon rates.
Thank you, Mr. Luther, is there's any question concerning the reclamation on Mr. Luther? If not, then do I hear a motion that we honor that request and, of his recommendation, supervision, he and Mr. Broyles would go forward with?
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion, in many's favor, let me know saying aye. Anyone post a objection, let's record some statements, and now, annual bid awards.
Well, yes, each of you should have a packet of bid tabs, these are our annual fiscal year bids for materials for the road department that we do every year, the top sheet is just the list of vendors and our proposed vendors for each item, we'll run through these tabs, each one just very quickly, so that you can all kind of see where we're standing. The other, the first item is our hot mix asphalt material, this is material that we pick up at the supplier for our use in typically patching, maybe a little painting at times, we have wire grass was the only bidder. The first item is, is basically a patching material, half-inch patching material, this is kind of what we've always did in the past, sixty dollars a ton, and I added this new four twenty-four, which is a state DOT specified mix that we can use, like when, say our Buck's Pocket project, where we're doing some pavement under state specs, we have to have a state specified mix, so this gives us something that we actually have a bid for now with a specified rate that we can apply towards those types of projects if we do them in the past, so this is a, a wearing surface type mix that we actually put out on our highways if we're doing federal aid jobs, this is that wearing surface, excuse me, mix that we use, so it's a little bit more than just a patching, but you see those two items there, kind of how it compares, same price from last year. At any time you have questions, please, please ask. Our next is our concrete, low bid by Southern Concrete, good a little bit less than last year, of course, we did just purchase our concrete for the Buck's Pocket crossing from them, they provided some, some good mix, and we're good to work with, so we're gonna make that recommendation on them again this time, and you can see down at the bottom the slurry, the cement slurry that we use for our pipeliners, I'm afraid they made a mistake in their bid, you can see the difference there from a hundred seventy-two to seventy, but it was clearly written seventy dollars, so I haven't, haven't discussed that with them, but, but that's the bid, so we don't know how, how that will work out, if we'll get to do much of that next year anywhere. Next item, we're court-gated about pipe, two vendors, Contact and Fallen Farms, which was previously Harvey Culver, been around a long time, he has sold out to this other company, they both bid the same discount on, on the provided price list, their lift hooks were a good bit cheaper, about half price, the biggest difference is in the hauling freight charges, as you can see there at the bottom, the difference there between, on the top, Tommy, I'm talking, typically, his orders are gonna be less than thirty-five hundred dollars, so if you look at Contact, under thirty-five hundred to a hundred seventy-five dollar freight charge, and from Fallen Farms, it's only a hundred, and of course, if they bought any of the tunas coated pipe from Contact, it's an automatic hundred dollar freight right there, and then it was, it was automatic hundred, no matter what the, no matter what the order was, so the biggest difference is just in the freight charges, so we would be recommending Fallen Farms for this, this year. Next is our crushed stone, see, we received three bids, Vulcan, Blunt Springs, and Reed has opened a new quarry in the Hollywood area, what we've always done in the past is honor all of these bids, accept all of these bids, and then be able to haul from the location that best fits the work at the time, so with this now, we have Vulcan right here centralized, we have Blunt Springs on the south end, and now we have Reed on the north end, so we have, basically, our entire county is mostly covered, you know, to the biggest extent, where we have the ability to get crushed stone at different locations, again, based on hauling charges, hauling time that we've had to apply in the past, so we will, we will honor all three of these bids. Next is our CRS Two, most five.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
Which one of these, the strip, descriptions covers the dent, three-quarter pressure under these narrows?
That is the, the bottom, with the Type A pug mix dent strip base, so of course, it would be just Vulcan and Blunt Springs, and Vulcan has left this year. In the past, Blunt Springs has always been lower, but because it's such a long haul, it's, all of that we typically always bring to the yard and treat it there on the yard through the pug mill, and so it's such a long haul to Blunt Springs, the difference in the per ton of price washes out when you, when you account for the hauling costs. Our CRS Two asphalt, this is liquid asphalt that we buy, put in storage tank on the yard, this year, Hunt Refining was low, low bid, and about four cents reduction from last year. Next is our grader blades, see two bids, Thompson Tractor was low this year, good, good little reduction in this cost here, I know they go through a pretty good bid for grader blades every year, I'm sure, so this will definitely be a help. Our high-dense poly pipe, received several bids, as you see, Harris Lands here in Fort Payne and S and S Wholesale Rainsville, their numbers are identical, they were two items that were low by Fallen Farms, but typically, we, we always make this award, when those numbers are the same, we'll honor and award both, both of those bids, so that gives us two options, depending on where the work is, what they need at the time, they can get the most convenient location. And next is our pipe liner, just received one bid again this year from Esco Industries, we got bought from this company in the past, started doing this, as you can see, the numbers have increased pretty substantial, so I don't know if we'll be able to.
What's the reason for that?
I really don't know, unless it's, if it's in the production of, of the liner itself, I don't know if those, you would think maybe with fuel being down as it has been, that some of those production would, would come down as well, but I, I haven't spoken to anyone with them, so I really don't know what the, of course, their, their freight charges are the same, you see at the bottom, those are the same freight charges as they were last year, so it can't be in the hauling, it's got to be in the production, unless there's a shortage of material, I really don't know.
You don't use that much from them, do you? You don't use that much from them, do you?
No, sir. These are kind of a specialized, you know, local thing that we, we have used. It's very beneficial to use it, but this may, may keep us from doing as much as we can.
Do you know why these other companies don't, don't bid that? Do they not have that option?
In the beginning, the Inmanet Associates were the first ones that we dealt with when we got into it. But I think they, they are kind of a dealer for Isco. Isco is, I don't know if they're actually the producer of it or not, but it's kind of a specialty thing of not a lot of these other, more local vendors like what we deal with. You know, Isco is out of Kentucky. So they do a much more regional type work. Our high performance coat patch, Hudson Materials was low this year, just a small increase from last year. Not a lot of difference there. And our lubricants, McPherson Oil was low on all these items, except for one particular item. And there's a substantial price difference in their bids versus the other vendors and the prices from last year. I'm not sure exactly, again, why that is, but a good little bit of difference through, through most all of these items. So hopefully that will be an improvement. I know we go through a lot of, of course, oils and lubricants and things of that nature with all of our equipment. Traffic signs, as usual, Vulcan signs and traffic signs ink. We'll honor both of those bids for those particular signs. And at the time of ordering or putting an order together, then we'll order from the one that's best, best price for the order. And then our sign posts, Vulcan signs was actually low this year on all of those items. So we typically will award all this, we award the signs to both of them, and then award the posts just to Vulcan since they're all low. And then lastly is our truck haul. This is something that we typically don't use and really haven't used hardly at all as any, but something that we've always done. Received one bid from Moses Excavating, and see those prices are the same as last year.
Thank you, Mr. Luther. We appreciate it. Let me understand that it was all coming ahead from bed to bed loss.
Yes.
And we will comply with that in every way that we can. And we appreciate your work on presenting this to us, gentlemen. Is there any questions concerning the competitive bids, as you can see?
I will say, it's, it's good to see some of these numbers come, come down. The last three, four years, it's all has came down. We've been expecting these numbers to come down. And it appears that in each case that we actually have some competition here, the numbers have come down pretty dramatically. So it's, it's a good thing to have competition in these bids. It looks good. It's a, it's a triumph. Maybe it's a triumph at the start.
This is just competition on our asphalt.
Yeah.
I love this.
That's right.
Gentlemen, you hear, Paul, these are your recommendations. You have copy of it. Any discussion about any object that they are announcing, speak to Mr. Luther. If not, do I hear motion? We accept these recommendations.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Means favorably having no saying aye. Anyone post extra objection? Thank you. That's a recommendation you have. Thank you, Luther.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Sheriff's Office Personnel, Mr. Edmondson. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to give you all a little bit of an update. We had our sale of task force vehicles and some of the county vehicles that were sidelined when we had our vehicle inspection. The three county vehicles that we sold were just, just, just over five thousand dollars. So that money will be coming back to y'all. And our task force vehicles, I think it was somewhere around twenty-seven five that we got out of those. We, we had a pretty good day. Some of those vehicles been sitting a while and we've worked on and tinkered with them and got them running. So that money will be put back into the task force budget.
Thank you, Mr. Ed.
Yes, sir. The first two items, I would like for y'all to accept the resignation of Norman Marquez and Crimson Lawn.
Any question concerning the resignation? If not, do I hear motion to honor your quest? Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Means favorably having no saying aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you.
We'd like to hire Adam Whitzel to replace Norman Marquez and Zachias Baile to replace Crimson Lawn, both of those are full-time corrections officers.
Thank you, sir. Any question concerning that? If not, do I hear motion to honor your quest?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Means favorably having no saying aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, motion care.
We had a request from Leslie Francisco. She is starting nursing school. So she, she is one of her corrections sergeant. She requested to be moved back just to corrections officer and change her pay grade back to five. She's going to be a part-time corrections officer now.
Thank you, sir. If you hear any, any question concerning the recommendation? If not, do I hear motion to honor your quest?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Means favorably having no saying aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you.
And also transfer Sebastian Gomez from part-time corrections officer to a full-time corrections officer.
Any question concerning the recommendation? If not, do I hear motion to honor your quest?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Means favorably having no saying aye. Thank you.
Thomas Underwood, who is a retired trooper. He lives just, just on the outside of our county, just on the south end. He had applied for us and he would, we interviewed him, done a very good interview. He's been a SRO before in the Bois City School systems. And he come up and interviewed with us, and we'd like to hire him for the part-time SRO position across there.
Any question concerning that? If not, do I hear motion to honor that request?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Means favorably having no saying aye. Anyone post extra objection? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ed. Chief of E.G. Grant, Revolution of Charlotte.
As part of the application process for this, this row up in District One, since, since that community up there is a high Hispanic community, and then the county as a whole is over five percent English language proficiency, they require that we put all of the paperwork and everything that we have in accordance with the Spanish and also if anybody needs some support for hearing that processed, then we'll provide that. And all that will go through. Tarkov is administrating grant and they handle that. But believe me, the past resolution basically authorized that.
Thank you, Charlotte. Mr. Wood, I'd like to see your dish.
It is. This is just a procedural thing. I did talk to Lucas at Tarkov this week, and he expects us to have a final yes or no on this sometime in November. So that'd be good. We can get that, and first next year, we can, we can get out and get those roads taken care of. So I make the motion to accept this revolution.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Your second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion concerning the motion to the second? Do I hear, means favorably having no saying aye. Anyone post extra objection? Thank you. Councilman De Agen, holiday calendar, Mr. Shaw.
Ms. Broler every year sends up their holiday schedule. It's a little different than what ours is. They go by what Tarkov does, and they're closing sixteen days. We have thirteen holidays. And some of those are a little bit different, and you can see that, that the three days additional, those employees take, take in a load on those days. But you can see the schedule that they have and what schedule they want to do. And it, like I said, it's been in accordance with what Tarkov does.
Yes, sir. Just procedural, again. We do that every year, but we have to record it on our meetings. Any question concerning that? If not, then do I hear motion to honor Mr. Sharp's request?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Means favorably having no saying aye. Anyone post extra objection? Thank you. Liability insurance on loss of time, Charlotte.
Mr. Harkell, I can follow up on this, but I just wanted to let, let y'all know about our, our loss ratio. There was a few years there in the, they divided counties up into three different categories, and we were in the top one or two in the, in that largest county category for a couple of years. We did have a couple, couple of workers' claims different than this past year and liability problems. Though they did something a little different this year. They took the last five years of insurance losses for every county. And every county that had less than, or had less than twenty percent loss ratio, got a ten percent bonus back to them on their premiums. And we were one of those counties. I think there were twelve counties in the state, and I think we were in the top five. And so twenty-two thousand that we got back, and like I said, that'll, that'll help, help the general fund budget out. And so I just want to bring that to your attention. Mr. Clifton back here has been our safety coordinator. We've got, I guess Matt Martin's going to be doing it now along with our assistant engineer. But I appreciate, appreciate Mr. Clifton, all the work that he's done, providing, making safety a priority. Like I said, it's good for, good for employees and good for, good for the county's budget as well. So...
Charlotte.
Paul.
Mr. [inaudible].
In the business, it's called American rating discount. It's hard to get the seat hard. Thank you, Mr. Clifton, for your hard work.
And like I said, that's a five-year look back. And like I said, we, we had, we had a couple of rags this year that may have thrown, we might have been toward the top of that. But anyway, I'm, I'm just tickled about that.
All of our department heads, everybody else, Mr. Clifton, will attest to this fact that, that they do a good job. And of course, him, Mr. Martin, and Mr. Rawls, and some of the others, folks at the Sheriff's Department are kind of captains of ships. And we appreciate that so very much.
And along with that, County Commission Association is doing a good job of promoting safety. And the overall, I think we're, the losses are down about forty percent from what the premiums are down about that much overall. So that's, that's tremendous leadership from, from them. Of course, Commissioner, Commissioner Harkell was the, was chairman, was president of the State Association when we started that program. So I appreciate his leadership on that, too.
It's been a, a good program since Mr. Harkell got that started. And you've got to, if you don't emphasize safety, it doesn't happen. And I appreciate all the department heads emphasizing safety.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any other comments? We'll move on to the commission personnel, Mr. Shaw.
As y'all know, Ms. Connie Bell's retiring at December thirty-first, and she's been here, she's been here forty years. I don't know how old she was when she started, but she's been here forty years. And she's going to be retired, and we're going to be moving around with a lot of different folks, doing different things. And partly what we've done is we've got Deb up here trying to nail a portion of what she does on the county's payable part of it. And some of the other duties, we're going to be rearranging and so on. So that's, that's left us, someone in payroll to help, to help Tracy down there. And so what we're going to do is, and all of that, like I said, we'll be changing up their, their job dues, and we're coming up and making some changes later for that in January. But right now, we need to go ahead and post a, post that position of the payroll clerk to assist Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. How long will this be posted?
We generally do that a couple of weeks. We may hit it. Probably we would fill that, probably that first month in October is one out of the sun.
That's a job we posted for fourteen days?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Any question concerning the posting of the job? If not, do I hear motion to honor Mr. Sharp's request?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Means favorably having no saying aye. Anyone post extra objection? Thank you. Temporary informant, Mr. Shaw.
Temporary informant, we sent those out in, and just, just as we kind of thought, there's only, we, we sent it out to a couple of people that were found in the phone book, different ones, and posted on the webpage. And we had First Choice Personnel, which is, which is one that we've been using. And then we also got two, one from California, one from Kentucky. And I'm not sure how they, they would be helpful here. But we do that on a bid rate. It's basically a fringe benefit rate. We'll pay on a certain dollar amount. And First Choice is, their rate is twenty-six percent, which is what it had been previously the last time we bid a few years ago. And the, the other ones were thirty-four, thirty-eight. So I would, I recommend we go back with the First Choice temporary service bid, being the low bidder.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any question concerning that? If not, do I hear motion to honor your quest?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Means favorably having no saying aye. Anyone post extra objection? Thank you. Budget update, Mr. Shaw.
I've given y'all a, just kind of a summary of our, of our budget for the upcoming fiscal year. That should be twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen fiscal year. It's, we, we're going to have a little bit of an increase in the budget, not a lot, but more than, more than what we've had. I think last year was maybe a one point five percent. This is going to be a three percent. So again, we're not talking just huge amounts, but that's, that's going in the right direction. We have a listing up here of kind of where the budget was at, what kind of went down. And then we're kind of gradually getting out of this economic recession. We're still nowhere near where we were, where our projection would have been without, absent the, the economic recession that would look like to be where we're at. In doing this, I think, of course, federal inmate revenues are up a little bit. So that, that is, that is definitely a positive. And I think the cause of that being up, that, that helps us, that helps our general fund. It helps everything else. So within this budget, I want to, I'm going to propose to the commission a small cost living adjustment, two and a half percent. We've not done, we've not been able to do a lot of those over the last eight, ten years. And, but I feel comfortable in doing two point five. Also, you know, we talked about roads here this, this morning, and I definitely feel your pain on that. And I know that it's something that, that's important to y'all, it's important to citizens. And again, we, we've not had any increases in, in our, in our revenue in so long. But I, I do feel like that we can increase the amount that the commissioners give in your districts. I think we've been doing about a hundred seventy-five to a hundred eighty thousand. And I think we can, we can probably bump that to two hundred for each district this year. Again, that's going to go, that's not going to go a long way with our fifteen hundred miles of road, but...
It's a half a mile for this.
It'll, it'll, you know, it'll help a little bit. It'll help a little bit. And so I, I feel comfortable with that within the budget.
Two miles for the whole county.
Right. Yeah, yeah. So it's...
A two-mile entry.
If it's a narrow road, you might get a little bit.
Yeah.
But in any case, that's, y'all just go over...
Throw water on there.
I'm excited. I'm trying to be positive here. But anyway, that's, like I said, it's not, it's not right, but it's, it's, we're going, hopefully the economy is getting a little bit better as we're moving along. And maybe, maybe we'll continue to do that.
Well, Mr. Shaw, we appreciate all that you all have done. And we're glad you can give employees two and a half percent increase. That's not very much. Insurance probably take care of that. And it's not going up as much as we first thought, about one point nine percent.
One point five.
One point five percent. So anyway, that, that's some good news in that. But even after Mr. Wood throws water on there, on our little road project, two miles, ten and five, we, we happy, we didn't have to cut anything. Everybody was level funded. And so every county in the state's not that fortunate. With the funding issues we have, tomorrow, I've got a meeting in Tallahassee County. Almost half the counties in the state have had services cut because of the revenue shortfall. And so it's, it's not just us. It's statewide. And, but we're thankful that we didn't have to cut any jobs. We're thankful we didn't have to cut any monies to any agencies. And even though we, we have problems, we're thankful that it's as well with us as it is. And I won't say one other thing. We just got through with our audit with the, with the state. And I want you to know, and I want the public to know, you gentlemen already know it, but there was not one... there was not one dime out of place. Not a dime. Now, they always wants to do procedures different. It's according to whoever's duty, you know, one fella might want you to do it this way. There not one dime was out of place. And, uh, I, I want you to know that this is not a, a, a one-man job, but I, I want, I want you to understand that Mr. Sharp's captain of that ship. And, uh, I'm here and I help him all I can, but the, uh, credit goes to him and these girls that are out here, and these gentlemen that, uh, work every day at this. And, uh, I know the book stops, uh, with me in there, in that office, but, uh, I want you to know that whatever success that there is, uh, in this procedure, that these folks that are here, that every day that are here, and I see them every day. They work hard at it and it reflects in what has shown up. And these people come from everywhere and start digging into everything you do. You can't imagine what these girls have to go through with, some of these people. That has to have an answer to everything, everywhere, every day, for some reason or another that they don't even know. And, uh, to say the least, I get aggravated at them. I don't have to deal with them. There's much of these people. But anyway, not a dime was out of place. And I tell you, you ought to have a flag raised over the grave for that. For, for just a minute. Cause even we have a little bit of a, and even though you're not dead, well.
That's something I don't know here, right?
Now, before we, before we adjourn and that completes our agenda. Well, let me get, go ahead and go with, then I have another round. Go ahead.
I just did want to point out, uh, for a number of years, we've worked and tried to find some means to help to see the mental health center. They have been, they've been providing services to, uh, Sheriff's Department and basically free for a long, long time. And, uh, and in doing so, uh, have saved the county a great deal of money. And included in this next year's budget, there is a, a source of revenue for them from the one mil debt tax.
Let me, let me make a comment. I know I've talked a lot today, but I, I've, I've been kind of negative on stuff. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a little positive here. Uh, as, as much as I complain and, and, and grieve about some of this money, what Mr. Harrow said is, is, is true. Uh, we're in so much better shape than, than, than other, other counties. And, and it's a testament to our employees. It's a testament to the folks that work in, in our offices and, and, and take care of this, this stuff. But it's also a testament to Mr. Harrow, uh, and, and the, the job that he does and, and all these commissioners, uh, um, Mr. Jackson and Mr. Condon. Mr. Westbrook is, uh, is, is the new one here, but he's following right along in, in these, the footsteps of these, these guys. He's been, had experience and, uh, you know, every year there's behind the scene things that, that, that people don't, uh, see and don't, doesn't realize, but, uh, uh, you know, those two gentlemen got a lot of extra money from the state and from grants last year. And Mr. Harrow is continuously, uh, working to find us extra money that, that other counties aren't getting because, uh, because they don't know how to get it. They're not, they, they're not, uh, you know, involved enough to, to, to look at those grants and look for those grants and, and get down there at the state guys like Mr. Harrow does, uh, continuously, time and time again, to bring in extra funds to this county. And so I want to firstly thank y'all for, for doing that. The, uh, the county is fortunate to have this group of folks and the leadership that, that Mr. Mr. Harrow, uh, gives us in the county government.
Very kind. I appreciate that. Before we adjourn, Mr. Clifton, please come to the microphone. Clifton, please give us a report. And I know these gentlemen, uh, you're talking about behind the scenes. These gentlemen are here night and day, all night last night, all day yesterday. I, I kept in contact with them. Mr. Clifton, give us a report from, from, uh, our particular, uh, situation we had the last three, four days.
Well, we, we activated on Friday and began to, to have the planning process. And then of course, most of you have seen the, the, uh, operation condition reports that have come out. And we tried to keep all the community and elected officials abreast. We have, uh, uh, but during our activation, we didn't have a whole lot of problems. Uh, we began to experience some problems on Saturday with some evacuees. We actually had, uh, currently we have, uh, still got thirty-five, uh, evacuees from Florida out at Pond Road Bible Camp. Uh, we've got about twenty out at Little River Campground that, that are in RVs. Uh, we've got, uh, about ten more at a church in Mentone. Uh, and then two or three families are hosting some of their family, uh, that have come in from Florida. We did not have to open any community shelters, so we didn't have to expend any, any county assets for that. Um, we, we worked with, with, with our, our neighbors to, to make sure we didn't get into a situation where we had to do that. We did not activate the ELC pass to level three, which is just, just our EMA staff in-house. Uh, but we were activated, uh, all night Saturday night, uh, I'm sorry, all night Sunday night and, uh, last night. And, uh, uh, but as it turned out, we had about, uh, fifteen trees go down that, that, that we had to do something with. The local fire department worked on that. Uh, like Mr. Rawls said, we weren't aware of any flooding. Uh, we had some minor power outages out of, uh, uh, well, we had one in Mentone early, uh, it wasn't even night yet. It was, it was, it was actually still before, before dark at Mentone. And then about, uh, ten, thirty, eleven o'clock last night, uh, we had a pretty good outage at Silvania, pretty much the whole, uh, Silvania area on both sides of, of seventy-five went out for, for a short time. Uh, and it was just due to trees falling on panel lines. Uh, what, what you have now is, it's gonna continue to rain pretty much through, through the day, at least on offer. It's gonna diminish. Uh, and then things will begin to warm back up and we should have a good weekend. Uh, like I said, no, we, we got very lucky. Uh, and we did have the, the state, uh, to activate. We, we did support operations for them. We're going to the college, uh, the division, ELC opened over there. Uh, we do have, still have, we did get a, we did not issue a local state of emergency. We didn't see a reason for that. Uh, but, but Governor Hybe did, uh, issue a statewide declaration, uh, uh, on Sunday. And then she talked to the president and yesterday, uh, president signed a declaration of major disaster for the whole state. So what that means is, is that we could wind up seeing some, some mitigation grant money coming, uh, after this storm. Don't exactly know how much or when, but, but that is a possibility for that. So that's pretty much where we stood. We got very lucky, uh, with it. Uh, didn't, didn't really experience anything out of the ordinary. Uh, but now with that said, keep in mind that this, uh, this new storm, uh, has done its little, little curl. Uh, uh, I believe it's Juan, Jose, Jose, um, looks like it could, uh, come back toward Florida or come back toward Carolinas and, and get us again. So, uh, right now we have, uh, Fort Plank City Water Board has a team deployed to South Georgia, uh, and the sheriff's office. Y'all said it's six?
We got six on standby.
Got six on standby to deploy with, uh, the law enforcement task, uh, 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 strike team, uh, to go down south, uh, under state mutual aid assets, which, and of course, what that means is, is that since we do have a declaration, we, we will get reimbursed for any time that those folks are gone or any expenses that they may have. Uh, and right now, uh, they have noted that we, we may put up Task Force Three, which, uh, Fort Plank Fire, a heavy nine team is, is part of that. Have y'all heard anything about? We still don't know if they're gonna get deployed as far as recovery's concerned. Uh, but, but as it stands right now, that's all the assets that we have. And we don't have anybody other than the sheriff's office called up right now, uh, to go help with recovery. We, that's gonna be a long drawn out process. We could wind up with, with some, some assets being, uh, deployed for recovery. But like I said, the good part of that is, is it will be, uh, reimbursable should that happen. Uh, but we don't anticipate any problems right now.
Uh, I'm just saying this from state standpoint. Mr. Clifton and Mr. Posey have completed certifications. Give us, give us something. Now, we're gonna go into a little more depth of this in our next meeting, but give us, give us, give us a, a.
Well, we, we mentally, Mr. Posey, um, Mr. Posey actually finished his, his advanced, uh, emergency management academy at EMI, uh, in, um, Emmersburg, Maryland. That's the FEMA training school. And, and Mr. Posey was accepted to that, uh, last year. And it's a year-long process. It's, you go for a week per quarter. It includes, uh, writing a paper and, and a lot of research. And it's kind of a think tank, uh, deal at a national level. And there are only two cohorts a year, two, two, two classes of thirty-five people each a year that go through that advanced academy. And Mr. Posey was cho, chosen for that. And then shortly after that, I got chose to be in the pilot study for the advanced academy, uh, at, in, in the region. FEMA's looking at, at, at rolling that regional, uh, that academy out to, uh, to the regions. And so we did a pilot program in, here in region four. And, and I got to go to Florida and participate with, with the, the states from region four. And I, I too have now finished, uh, the academy. As far as I know, uh, myself and Mr. Posey are the only people in the state who have actually completed the advanced academy.
That's, that's what I wanted to make reference to.
And, and, uh, so, so we, we are very proud of that. And we do have, uh, uh, Mr. Martin is, is finishing his basic academy. And he is scheduled, we've applied for him to go to the advanced academy in Tennessee. They're doing another region four, another regional, uh, academy. But the, the one, uh, that Michael went to, uh, like I said, that's, that's a, and this is competitive. Uh, there's only thirty-five people. So it's seventy people per year nationwide. And that's from local, state and federal, uh, people get to go to, to the academy at EMI. And that's, that is a, a, a pretty big deal. Uh, I got turned down three times. But not, the deal is, they said I was already advanced. Uh, and, and luckily we just had some extra room in the, in the, uh, uh, regional academies, the reason I got in. But, but Posey was actually, uh, chosen based on his qualifications and, and his leadership ability. And we are very proud of, proud of that. And we have applied for him to go to the executive academy. There are, there are three levels of academy, basic, advanced and executive. And so we put in the, uh, recommendation that he be accepted. And again, now that academy, there's only one cohort per year in it. And there's only thirty-five people chosen nationwide for it. And it is taught by the Naval Postgraduate College and Harvard Business School. So that is a, that, that, that would be a great honor if we can get him into that this year.
Let me just say this, I, I, how much I, I appreciate that. And, and, uh, every, every day, uh, I see these people, Mr. Martin, even though he's at the bottom of the list, is going, beginning all of that training now. And, uh, the more we have of it, the better off we are. And we thank you and Mr. Posey and Mr. Martin for your fidelity to service. And, uh, it shows up in, planted, it shows up in what we had in place, even though we were, you called it luck. I don't believe luck. But, uh, I, I'm, I'm not overruled in your decision, no word. But, uh, but luck to, uh, out the window as far as I'm concerned. But should, uh, should the situation had developed that, uh, we needed something, these gentlemen had everything in place to go generate a whole nine yards. And, uh, I just wanted to, to recognize you in that regard today. We'll be, Mr. Posey couldn't be here today due to some sickness in his own family. And, uh, but, uh, we will, uh, do that formally, uh, in a, in a, in a meeting, uh, just in the near future. But, uh, I, I wanted you to know how much we appreciate it and appreciate the work you give your things the last few days.
Well, we do appreciate it. Uh, but what, what, you know, really what makes it work are, are, are the people that work with us. We've got our, I mean, we have an outstanding group of folks, everybody from, from the engineer's office, road department, Mr. Posey did a great job. Uh, the sheriff's office, all, all the firemen. I mean, it's, it's, it's a team effort. And most importantly, it's the, the support of the elected officials. We get from, from y'all. I bet. There are counties out there that, that I talk to every week that talk about how difficult, uh, it is to get the tools they need to do their job, you know, through the county commissioner, through the county administrator. And I, I have to say that, that, uh, everybody, you ask anybody in the state and, and they will say that we have a, a really top quality, uh, administration, elected officials team to work with because we get the tools that we need. And it allows us to do what we, we do. And we, we, we appreciate that so much. And I know you don't hear that and we kind of do our thing behind the scenes. But, but it's, it's you who allow us to do the job we do and we appreciate that. We appreciate the confidence that the commission, uh, and Mr. Harrow has in us. And, and, uh, you know, like I said, but without y'all, uh, we can't do it. And we're all in this to, to work for the citizens. And that, that is the big deal. And I know all of our support people, uh, that, that work with us, like I said, that, everybody from road department to the first responders, uh, do a really good job for us. And we have good working relationships with the other boards. Uh, the, the, uh, Board of Education works real well with us. We get, we get, we have such a good team out here in county. And that's what makes it work. It's not just one little department or, or, or anything. But, uh, you know, we, we do appreciate what you do. Thank you so much.
Chairman.
I, I was, got something I want to say. I know, uh, there's been a lot of stuff going on, but I got out of church Sunday night and going down the road. And I thought, well, I'm gonna call Director Clifton, see how he's doing. And I called him and he is humping and a pipping. And, uh, he is down there hooking the generator up at the road department, seven, eight o'clock at night by himself. And a lot of stuff that these guys do, not him, but Matt Sharp or, or girls or the veg, that they've worked a lot of late hours sometimes and everybody. And I appreciate all you do. I know you care about the people of Gallo County, cause you proved that. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank y'all. We do appreciate it. Thanks so much.
And, and just one other thing, uh, I'm not overruled. As good as it may be, we've done, went over my time. Anyway, I tried to make through the thirty minutes, but we, I'll let y'all out go to dinner in a minute. Then I just give you an example. Mr. Mrs. Clifton made me think of it. But Ms. Burke sitting right back there. You know, everybody's gone the other day, four fifteen, everybody's out the door. She's still in there working. You know, uh, I mean, six o'clock, still in there working. Now, you know, it's hard to find employees that will go above and beyond what's necessary. And that's just exactly what we've got. And, uh, whoever we hire to help her, that's what we gonna expect out of them. But they set the example for that, is what I'm saying. I don't, you don't, but they do. And you gentlemen, and I, I just wanna, uh, thank you for that. Yesterday, when, when we closed at eleven o'clock, me and, I stayed a little later. Mr. Sharp stayed later night. So, you know, that's just, that's just the way we have to operate sometimes. And I, and I'm very appreciative of it.
And that is the thing, cause we've never.
But I'm getting old.
We've never had, uh, I called Mr. Rawls at, you know, at two o'clock in the morning and it sounds like he's just sitting there waiting on, on a call. And, and I know he gets his people out in, in, in all hours of the night in the worst kinds of weather and, and never, has never turned us down, never said anything. Uh, anytime we've asked, uh, mutual aid from other counties, uh, uh, our people have always stepped up to, to be prepared to go. But again, that's what it takes. We don't get that privilege of, of, of saying no because we are public service. But again, it's, it's not just a few, it's, it's everybody. I mean, I, you know, talk about calling. Again, we've got county commissioners out at eight, nine o'clock at night, calling to check on citizens, make sure everything's o, okay. And we do appreciate that. I mean, really, that means so much to, to have, you know, to know that people are, are supporting us. But again, thank y'all so much.
Thank you for that. That concludes our agenda for today. We've gone a little longer than normal, but those things have to be done at times. That concludes our agenda. Our next meeting will be September twenty-sixth here in Chambers. Uh, if there is no objection, I hear your motion adjourned.
I love your adjourn.
Being without objections at all. Thank you.